Much more, you know, you're adding to your credibility by involving more people who are ultimately going to be asked to pay for some of these things. You know, and that's where I get the rub on it is, let's say that there's some common ground or there's some way to mitigate the potential environmental impact. Okay? There's got to be some up ground over there. I mean, come on, right? Who's going to pay for it? And do those folks who elect us, because it's not our money, do enough of them feel strong about it that they're willing to invest the money? That's, you know, at the end of the day, it's kind of that way. The zip line you guys keep bringing up, you know, I respect what your point is, but I'm going to tell you, I can't even begin to tell you how many people from Oldsmar have said to me both online and privately how excited they are, but they're just not the same two subjects.
And I wasn't pointing out the zip line as a matter of, I don't think it should be done. We don't, we don't feel that way. I feel it's a great benefit, but I am pointing out the fact that...
You're not being made to go anywhere.
We were interested on the 22nd...
Listen, you're being given alternative instead of flat-out turn down. Right? Go get some juice from there, come here, because the support, I think it's pretty evident, doesn't exist right now. And so, that's my advice to take it for what it's worth, but I think that you have added to the credibility of the cause. And, you know, I'd love to see horseback riding here in Oldsmar.
And to Eric's point...
I'd love to see it over there. I'll tell you that right now. You know, I would, but I don't think it's going to happen right now. So you guys could come here, but go do your homework and see if you can present something that would change enough votes to put that wheel in motion. Other than that...
And to Eric's point, the fact that we're having this discussion in a citizens' open forum probably does work better for you, because if it goes on an agenda, there's going to be a vote taken at the end of it. And as Vice Mayor indicated, it doesn't look good the way things are going right now. And to Councilmember McGee's point, and the point that I made about going to Booker Creek, it sounds like if there are other alternatives, even in the city of Oldsmar, that if it's not in the preserve, you don't care if it's at Canal Park, if it's at the lakes, you don't, that's not of interest. You want it there or nowhere? I mean, that's what I heard tonight, is that if it can't be there, because you have people that live right there, that if we could find a spot somewhere else in the city that would accommodate everything that needs to go into a public park, that that's still not good enough.
And that's not, that's not what was entirely addressed. It's, the main concern or the main interest focal point would be the preserve. If, like Ms. McGee said, if there's someplace else, you know, within the area, maybe we can look at that option. I know Booker Creek's not really interesting to me. I know there are other businesses, quote unquote, that use that Booker Creek area without having to pay for the use of those same trails for businesses, as maybe it's been indicated or feels by the council members that there's some sort of one hand washing the other for other businesses within that area. And that's why we keep pushing for the preserve. But I know that there's other people in the Booker Creek area that are not paying to use those trails over there and running businesses.
And I can't, I can't speak when we're not around.
I can't, I can't comment on it.
If we can wrap this up, we've got a big presentation tonight.
This is, this is a citizens' open forum. We've only taken 30 minutes on this. I will tell you right up front, I love horses. I rode them in the mountains. Nobody say I don't love horses. I will never vote to put horses in that preserve, because I was the mayor when we bought all that land that couldn't have been put in for million-dollar houses, but we bought it to put it in a preserve. As, as the city manager said, we put it in the preserve for a reason, to preserve the natural state of that particular 300 or 400 acres as it is right now. There, there are other areas that we're developing up in north of the city that could possibly be for horses. We own a beautiful piece of land. Someday, we own a beautiful lake up there that I hope that we develop into a, for the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. But as it stands right now, if you put it on the agenda, I will make the motion not to allow the horses up there. I would be, but I will, I will lead to put them up there if that's developed.
If it's compatible, if it's deemed it's compatible. I mean, I think...
But we can talk about this all night.
So, I think you kind of hear...
So that's one vote.
So anyway...
But it's allowed one.
We've well exceeded our five minutes.
And we can't put it up at Twin Lakes, because that's camping.
Stop.
Camping.
But at any rate, I think you hear where we're coming from, and I think Vice Mayor Sidel has made some good points. We've all made some good points. Our city manager laid out the historic groundwork of how we got to where we are with that area down there. So I, I think the message from our side is pretty clear.
Doug, what would you recommend for him? Obviously, they're, they're tenacious and they have a big group of people that support it for the next steps, if they wanted to see what other opportunities within the city of Oldsmar might be possible? I mean, would that be working with Lynn and Leisure Services, or who would have that information, Bruce?
Unless you all direct me to do something different. The position is no horses in the preserve. Now you've suggested somewhere else?
I don't know where that is.
I don't either.
If there is...
If you want us to research, we'll be happy to do that. If you wanted to refer it to the Leisure Services Advisory Board, you can do that.
There are no other areas in the city of Oldsmar that's big enough for the preserve or for horses, except what we're developing around the lakes. That's the only place we have, unless you want to put them in... No, I won't, no. There is no land in this city.
I want to, I want to be blunt. No, it's not happening. If the council tells me something different, I'm going to do what they tell me. Plain enough?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council? Anybody else in the room that I might have missed? Seeing no one, we'll close the citizens' open forum. Next is the mayor's minute. Got a couple items. First of all, it probably should have started by now. Go Lightning. They're playing tonight for the Stanley Cup Playoffs. Also, the mayor's challenge for water conservation has ended at the end of April, and we are competing against other cities in the country that are our size. Last year, I believe we finished fifth. We hope to better that. Sheriff's, Citizens Academy, I'm honored to be enrolled in the class of number 47 for the Pinellas County Sheriff's Citizens Academy. If you get a chance to take it, it's exciting. So far, I've learned a lot about what the sheriff's department does. This coming Thursday, we're going to the airport to find out about their helicopters and their all-terrain vehicles and all the other type of tactical equipment that they have. Also, We Mean Business, Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce, the city manager and I visited Stop Kitchens right there on Tampa Road by Thornton's. Oldsmar ESOL, which is absolutely great experience. There were people from probably 20 countries that were excited to see us, that are learning English as another language so that they can blend in with our community. It was really humbling to see attorneys and doctors from other countries that actually gave up their careers to come to the United States to better themselves. So it was really touching to go talk to those. That's down by Forest Lakes Elementary, if you get a chance to pop in. And we hope that we have a new place for them to move, because they're closing the facility at Oldsmar Elementary. Principal's appreciation breakfast. We got to attend the appreciation breakfast for principals of Areas One and Two for Pinellas County Schools. It was wonderful to sit with the Forest Lakes Elementary principal and the Oldsmar Elementary principal and honor them and all the other principals in North County. Oldsmar volunteer appreciation dinner, that was great. Deputy City Clerk Kathy Horvath, in putting that together, thank you so much for all the work that you do in the 15th year of putting that on as well. She made it known. So it's the one way we can say thank you to all of the volunteers that work so hard. We can't pay them, but we sure do try and tell them how much we appreciate the things that we do. Deb Pauley and myself did the Visit St. Pete Clearwater kickoff for the 2016 campaign. We're excited about the direction tourism is taking. Oldsmar Fifth Friday, what a great turnout. Congratulations, Dan Soraki and Quinn and the staff that put that one on. Soul Circus Cowboys did a great job, line dancing, and I think it was well-attended. Cinco de Derby is coming up this coming Thursday, May 5th, 6:00 to 8:30 at Nielsen, benefiting the Upper Tampa Bay Education Foundation. National Day of Prayer is also coming up this Thursday, 6:30 to 7:30 on the steps of City Hall, 6:30 to 7:30 in the evening, I should say. Youth Dance Spring Recital, Saturday, May 7th, 6:00 to 8:00, Cypress Forest Rec Center, free admission. Opal Youth Performance, Friday, the 13th, Cypress Forest Rec Center, free admission. Oldsmar Organic Community Garden, Saturday, May 14th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., free and open to the public. All this information is available at myoldsmar.com. And for those that travel Tampa Road, be aware that Tampa Road will be closed starting May 5th, which is this coming Thursday, from 8:00 p.m. until Sunday, May 9th, at 5:00 a.m., completely closed from that May 5th to the 9th. And the reason that it's being closed, over the year, we have fielded a lot of complaints about the railroad tracks and the black pads as you approach from both the east and the west. So it is going to be closed for four days so that that road can be fixed, because it's been a danger to a lot of people and actually caused a couple of accidents. So be aware of that. If you drive that or know somebody that does, let them know. And I believe that's all that I have. We do have the community coffee breakfast, or breakfast coming up June 8th, but we'll have another chance to let you know about that. So that is the mayor's minute. And next item on the agenda, which I've got 900 sheets of paper up here, is the city of Oldsmar. And first is proclamation of National Day of Prayer, and I'll go ahead and read that for you. "National Day of Prayer. Whereas Americans have turned to Almighty God in prayer since our nation's founding, and whereas throughout the history of our city and nation, we have humbly bowed in prayer for guidance and comfort where needed, and have given thanks for our many blessings which God has graciously bestowed upon our nation since its inception. And whereas our nation's motto is, 'In God we trust, and we trust he hears us as we pray.' And whereas prayer has comforted us in three, in times of sorrow, and given us strength and hope for the future, we ask God to keep his hand upon us and bless the great city of Oldsmar, the state of Florida, and the United States of America. And whereas we continue to give thanks for the men and women of the military who are defending freedom, and we humbly ask for their protection, we pray for peace throughout the world. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is a day set aside by Congress for all Americans to pray and reaffirm the spiritual principles upon which this nation was founded. And whereas this year is the 65th anniversary of the consecutive annual observance of National Day of Prayer, and the theme this year is Wake Up America, which is based on the verse from Isaiah 58:1, which states, 'Shout it aloud; do not hold back; raise your voice like a trumpet.' And whereas across our nation, on May 5th, Americans will unite at specific times in prayer for our nation to acknowledge our dependence upon God, to give thanks to him, to recognize our need for personal and corporate renewal, and to invoke God's blessing upon our leaders and our families. Now therefore, I, Doug Beavis, Mayor of the City of Oldsmar, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2016, as National Day of Prayer in the City of Oldsmar and Oldsmar, and invite all residents to pray with diligence, humility, and obedience, and seek the face of Almighty God to direct our paths in these days and years ahead dated this third day of May 2016. Doug Beavis, Mayor." And I'm going to present this to Barry and Tracy Sullivan.
And we're glad you're back.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, this is the 65th Annual Observance of the National Day of Prayer, as put forth by an act of Congress. What's interesting for us is this is the 18th National Day of Prayer service that we've helped run here in the city of Oldsmar. And we think it's an important one, especially this year being the centennial year for the city. So we just want to extend an invitation at 6:30 this Thursday night, City Hall steps, for all of you to come out to be a part, council members as well. You're invited to come, Mr. Manager, and come out and be a part of it with us. And just petition God on behalf of our city, our state, and our nation. The nation's pretty much divided right now, especially in this hot political season. So what a good opportunity for us to come together and just ask God to move and just to bless our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I will not be able to be there. I'll be at the Sheriff's Academy. Otherwise, as you know, I would be there as well.
And I would be there as well. As a matter of fact, last time I was vice mayor, that was one of the duties I had.
Oh, there you go.
But I am traveling back from Washington, D.C. at that time.
The next item is the presentation to the winners of the American Water Works Association Water Conservation Poster Contest. And I will turn that over to Eskaphon.
My name is Esteban Bazza. I'm the City Sustainability Coordinator. Tonight, we're recognizing the local winners for the Water Conservation Poster Contest. Earlier this year, students from both our elementary schools, Oldsmar Elementary and Forest Lakes Elementary, the students were asked, the students received a blank poster and were asked to design the color of the poster however they wished to, and that it had to promote water conservation. This contest is part of a state competition hosted by the Florida Section American Water Works Association to promote National Drinking Water Week, which is May 1st through the 7th, as well as water conservation. Tonight's winners were submitted at the state-level competition. Unfortunately, they did not win, and that's only because there's just great talent throughout the state, and there's only so many first-place winners. As part of the recognition, students will receive a certificate of award, as well as tote bags, photo prizes. These tote bags are also, also have their artwork imprinted on them. As part of the package, they receive art supplies, as well as gift certificates from Michaels, hopefully to encourage them to continue to explore their artistic talent and to continue to promote positive messages such as water conservation. Our first winner is Isabella Jackson, first place for kindergarten through firsts from Forest Lakes Elementary.
Great. There's that, and there's your certificate.
She's so cute.
She'll just stand over here, we're going to get them all up here, and then we'll do a group shot.
The next winner is Tessa Nun, first place for second through third from Forest Lakes Elementary.
Water equals life. That is true, isn't it? Congratulations. Here's your certificate.
Thank you.
Come over here, we'll take a quick picture.
Right there behind you.
Right behind you. Congratulations.
Our next winner is Cheyenne Muertes, first place, fourth through fifth from Forest Lakes Elementary.
Water saving, very nice. That's a good message, too. Love our planet and serve water. That's very nice. Congratulations.
We give the mayor one thing to do.
One more.
Our next winner is Hager Yolfi, second place, fourth through fifth from Forest Lakes Elementary.
That one? Congratulations.
Just a tip.
Is that all for Forest Lakes or no?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to group them then, or do you want to group with all of them?
Deb, why don't you put them up here in front of the council?
That's where we're coming.
Right here?
No, in front of these people over here. No, not me. These are people over here. You know, the mayor's already there. Get the council in there. Not, no, no. Put them up there.
I'm just going to smile.
Jerry, you should just smile.
Just smile.
That's what Justin Bieber feels like. I'm worried I was at the Beyonce concert, got plenty to practice.
Next winner is Jayden Scala, first place, second through third from Oldsmar Elementary.
Don't be a drip, huh? That's funny.
She gets that shirt made for Jerry.
You're going to be a mayor someday, kid.
Our final winner is Arena Garza, first place, fourth through fifth from Oldsmar Elementary.
Excepting on behalf of the council. Here, you want to hold both these? Hold that right here. Now, let's go over here so we can get a picture on this side of the council. She's going to be really happy.
Jay, look over here. Good job.
This guy is trying to get in the... Hey, Dan, get that over here.
Perfect. Good job. Good job. Next is our Community Redevelopment Agency, and that is the presentation from the University of South Florida on the update of the town center. Taryn, are you here? Are you the spokesperson?
Mayor, my name is Taryn Sabia. I am faculty at the School of Architecture and Community Design at USF. And with me this evening are 11 graduate students who have been dedicated to looking at the city of Oldsmar and issues around redevelopment within the CRA, the State Street Area, Park Boulevard, and St. Petersburg Drive. So they're going to go through their presentations of these different development areas and tell you about some of the unique features. I just wanted to give a brief introduction about where some of these ideas came from. Early on, we did a workshop with council and city staff. It was a great day. We learned a lot about Oldsmar. So, one, we thank you for doing that with us so that we could learn from you, but we also thank you for the opportunity to be able to work on this project. It's been a great opportunity for the students, and hopefully you'll love what you get from them out of it. We did a lot of research about Oldsmar, and I think one thing that was maybe a pleasant surprise to us was that Oldsmar's 100-year history is actually a history rooted in innovation. And that that history and the innovation that we saw in it stems from the original plan for the city of Oldsmar, which was laid out in the spirit of Washington, D.C. So the Washington, D.C. plan was by a gentleman named Lon Font, it's called the Lon Font Plan. And there is still a planning commission to this day in D.C. that actually is the guardian of that plan in D.C. So nothing happens without it going through them. The students actually took a trip to D.C. and got to hear directly from the planners that work in the spirit of the Lon Font Plan. And I think that that was really beneficial to them, understanding the urban design framework pieces that was built into it. So the significant pieces and what RE-Olds really wanted to see happen through that plan was the fanning street element that carries you from State Street and City Hall all the way to the waterfront. That that waterfront was really about bringing people to a shared space along the water, and that it was a place where working families and this idea of entrepreneurship could really flourish and enjoy living. So this was something that we thought was very special and unique to the city of Oldsmar. So a few of the other things that had come out of that workshop early on were the idea of Oldsmar being on the edge, Mr. Mayor. That Oldsmar is, is edgy, that it's outside the box, and, you know, that it is breaking out. And so some of the students really took to that, as well as you looking at them saying, well, what would it take for you to live here? You know, Oldsmar has a tremendous amount to offer in terms of recreation and jobs. Everyone's looking for jobs. Oldsmar has quite a few of them, which is fantastic. And, you know, businesses like Nielsen and Lockheed Martin are very attractive to a lot of young professionals. So the average age of your graduate students is 25. So these are exactly the types of young professionals, I think, that you are hoping to get, you know, in, in Oldsmar and, you know, coming here, staying here, raising families here. So a lot of their inspiration also came from that in terms of trying to see themselves in Oldsmar and the things that Oldsmar has to offer. So they're going to go through a few elements with you. They're going to start a bit from the beginning where they began. There's, again, three teams, and they're looking at through the three different areas. And they've all come up with urban design framework elements. Each team was asked to think about four specific elements that were unique to their area, but then as a collective, they used all 12 to really influence the project overall. And this was something that we took right from D.C. and some of the elements that they do there. The elements themselves are a bit different, but the idea of having that framework. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce the first team. They will go ahead and get started, and then we're going to shift through the teams. We'll change out boards, and we're going to change out models as we go. It might be hard for some of you to see some of the detail work on the models, so you can feel free to come down and, and look at them. They'll be pointing some things out in them as we go.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started with this, I wasn't on council when this was decided to do. I do know that, that the council authorized a study on this at $50,000, which is a lot of money. I'd like someone really quickly to, to educate, you know, I know the background, to educate everybody. What did you actually ask for in this project? Is there something particularly you asked for in this project? So that's a preface to where we're going.
Well, yeah, I mean, we have actually, of course, a written agreement with the College of Architecture and Community Design. The focus is on taking a new look at the town center plan and...
Was that the main object of this?
With a particular emphasis on State Street and St. Petersburg Drive. And then there was a third point of a more formal connection between downtown, our State Street, the CRA, and the water, our RE-Olds Park.
Right.
So those were kind of the main points.
And to Terry, that a little further, which you weren't part of at the time, was we had a workshop where we kind of broke into three different groups, and, you know, we talked about what was important to us, and we broke into different teams and, and talked about what was different to us and what we saw as the overall picture. And I think one of the things that, one of the takeaways that I recall was, and I don't mean to interrupt, but since he wasn't on council, was that, you know, we had the Dunedin and the Safety Harbor that have the Main Street, but it really didn't tie everything else in the city together. And that was the one common thing that I think was kind of a takeaway, was to how you tie all the great amenities that we have in the city together so that people can enjoy them all, not just the one thing. And I think that alludes to what Bruce was saying.
You know, the many thousand people that, that do watch this program.
Sure.
Educate them also. Okay, thank you.
Apologize, thank you.
Nope, not at all. We do have a board toward the back that also has some of the other takeaways that came out of that workshop. So the idea of, you know, the, the kind of coming together of old and new, and seeing how that new can come in, of taking vacant land and creating something from it, of having that strong connection from the downtown area to the waterfront. You know, some of the things that had come out, too, were, you know, the people of Oldsmar and the character here. And I think one thing that we've gotten to be a bit more familiar with is that a lot of that character comes from the people here living in Oldsmar, as well as the events and the types of programs that take place here. And that, that's really a strong part of the character of the place. And so they're trying to come up with developments that help... And so they're trying to come up with developments that help complement that through the public spaces and the types of environment that they're creating. So I'll have my first team come up and introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Kyle Santilli. I am going to speak on behalf of Brazilian Oldsmar, which is the first of the three groups. And we focused on the area around City Hall. If you look at this model...
Could you introduce the rest of your team if you would?
This is Stanislava, Jessica, and Vin. And we started off looking at the area around City Hall and developing a new master plan to create a downtown that could kind of reinvigorate the city in some way. And we named it Resilient Oldsmar because we thought about how we could do this in a way that would actually, you know, enhance the city and not just, you know, die down and/or not be effective, and also would serve the existing infrastructure of the city. I'll have to give it to Stan.
Yes. Hello, my name is Stan. When we start learning about the city and looking in a map, we real... I was particularly focusing on Tampa Road, and noticed that Tampa Road is a pretty busy road which connects Tampa to St. Pete and other places. But they use a Tampa Road just as a, like corridor is a passing when the Oldsmar in the middle. And plus, the Tampa Road is right divided the city on two parts. And I went to, you know, I went to the Tampa Road as a pedestrian, and it really was hard to cross it or even, it wasn't pleasant experience to walk on the sidewalk on the Tampa Road. So I was trying to learn about Tampa Road as much as I can. And then I just learned about the places which Tampa Road divides, like waterages, the preservation parts, which is mostly on the other side of the road, and commercial versus residential spaces. And then we start thinking how to solve the problem and unite those two parts of the city in one, and how to make Tampa Road instead of being disadvantaged part of the city, turn around and be advantaged because it's a busy road, how to bring people from that busy road to the city and, you know, enjoy the Oldsmar city.
All right. And to continue, we started looking at sort of definitions and looking at, you know, what are the key components here. And so we looked at the charrette and what you wanted from us, which were walkability, mixed-use, something that was innovative, and something that could act as a kind of hub for Tampa Bay with the beauty and charm that Oldsmar has and are amazing. And so we looked at the, we looked at the sort of resilient elements, and we did research on what are the historical plans in Tampa. We looked at pine woods and mangrove forests as components we could use to preserve the kind of natural elements of the city. And we also looked at pervious versus impervious surfaces because we noticed the stormwater infrastructure here is incredible, and we wanted to see how we could incorporate that into our plan to enhance it. And then we further started looking at what are the resiliency components of large-scale developments like this. And we started looking at the importance of public spaces and focused a lot of our energy on creating public spaces that sort of served this community that we would be developing.
On this board, we're going to look much more closer and zoom in scale to the area like City Hall and the library and the park. So it's like zoomed in more. And this is a diagram that we talked and discussed, and this is the land use and the five-minute walk and how it's going to tie in together with this five-minute walk radius. So when we looked at it and how it's connected to each other, and we looked at the core and how it can be, it's walkable from the City Hall to the library, to the park. And so that's what we looked at, and we see where is the point of that, and it's intersect on the middle. And so it brings the idea of how Oldsmar has the potential to have this area activated. And also, we looked at, I read a book, The Compact City Sustainable Urban Forum, and it says that a city must have a form and scale appropriate for walking, cycling, and have efficient public transportation with a compactness that encourages social interaction. And so we looked at block typology, and we compared how, because Oldsmar has a fan shape, and it has different type of block sizes. And in order for people to be, to make it walkable, we want to have that kind of grid type of pattern for the block. And we looked at it and how to make it more walkable. And so that's what we looked here and tried to dissect all layers that's in Oldsmar, look at the street network, the block sizes, and the five-minute walks, and how it all ties in together. And we also looked at flood zones, and we read that Old Tampa Bay receives the largest runoff portion from Clearwater, St. Pete, and Tampa. And also, Oldsmar, it's in Zone AE, it's a high risk of flooding. And so how do we read this more and how to come up with solutions?
So to look at ways to do these sort of strategies effectively, we looked at Washington, D.C., Alexandria, and then the Mosaic District, which is just outside of D.C., to look at things they were doing to create the, to create these environments that were sustainable in these kind of flood situations. And so we were looking at the uses of brick, concrete, cobblestone as ways of letting water percolate so that we don't have floods in this area. And so we also looked at different components of the green infrastructure and came up with an urban design framework, which we think all of the buildings would have, which is first, the design with green infrastructure, where you could have buildings that either have sort of green elements outside of them or even reaching over them. And then we also looked at integrating stormwater mitigation, and as we'll explain later, we have an amphitheater that also serves as kind of a bioscale to bring water into the ground from this concrete social space. We also looked at framing the street and making infill development that actually engages the public so that people want to hang around these spaces. And then to make, we also looked at how we need to encourage development that creates these public squares so that people have places to go when they come here.
So after our research that we did, we come up with a design. This are the key design feature. This are the frame, frame the street. Do you see a yellow dot, which is the intersection? We feel like there's a, there's a lack of street connection, and there's a lack of wayfinding. So we come up with the solution. The solution is to reconnect the blocks with the street elements. So as the block size becomes smaller, it encourages pedestrian to walk to other places. And by developing pedestrian crossing along with the street element, it allows social interaction and promote walkability. Another solution is through having active storefronts. Will not only help the economic, but development also create a walk, a walking experience for the pedestrian. The Greenside District, we call this Greenside District, offer a mixture of approach to each block and the building. Also, we have a solution for the drainage, water drainage. We call as, I say the solution is the LID approach system. It's, it's called low-impact development. It's an innovation approach for stormwater management with principle that design after nature. So the go-to filter store and infiltrate runoff water.
So we come up with design strategies, and I talked earlier about the block sizes and how to transform that. And so in this area, it's smaller here, we break it down to five ways. So first, it's a six existing block pattern. It is the one that's next to City Hall, and we look more to it and how we can break those sizes and make it more walkable. And then reconnect all the streets that we have and restich new blocks into that old urban fabric and increase density on each blocks. And the second one, we will start looking at developing facing process. And so we look at like how to establish mixtures and parking garages, and then having the City Hall building expanded and leverage value, mixed-use, retail, housing. And then phase four, you're going to come up with capturing demand of housing or offices, and that's phase five here that you would see in this diagram where you have all elements work and tie on together. And this is, the third one is establish a walkable block condition. So this is just a block typology and how we can work with our blocks here in Oldsmar and how to activate all of those block corners and having all the buildings that have active frontage and transform each age conditions that are inviting for people to come and activate it also, not just horizontally, but also vertically, so that we have that connection on both. And also because our theme is green, green infrastructure, how to actually have a green, vertical green infrastructure that can be fold into the buildings. And creating setbacks also helps to allow these mixtures to be activated. And here you would start to see how many housing are added to this area, about 137,000 square foot offices, 106,400 square foot parking, 96,000 square foot, and retail about 70,000, 70 square foot. And here you would see the create mix of uses and the sense of enclosure, having that ratio of building and street. That's what we learned from D.C., how they, why the people are, want to walk there because there's a ratio that they keep in that area so that people feel comfortable, people feel safe when they walk there, and they want to walk. And that's what we learned here in State Street, how to have that ratios of building and street, and even the Commerce Street and the Tampa Road, and how to actually create that sense of enclosure so that people really want to walk. And so it helps with economic viability and also the social interactions.
All right. So I think now we can come down. Do you guys want to come look at the model?
Yeah.
So if we can look at this smaller model, we're seeing a conceptual massing of what this development could potentially look like with these kind of ideas for the programmatic use of these buildings and in this diagram here. So you can see that we have things like the amphitheater here, which you can see here, which is facing towards the theater.
Can you just give us reference? That's City Hall.
Yes.
The brown buildings are existing.
Right. The brown buildings are existing. This is State Street, and this is Tampa Road, and then this is the railway.
So, I mean, here is like the straight street, like, and then here, this is the Tampa Road, and we saw this is Fairfield Avenue and Commerce Street. And so how to activate those streets and connect them to Tampa Road, these two roads. And then having this area activated has a frontage with the market and have that area that we can be activated and be used for people in Oldsmar. If we have public spaces and we have buildings that has functions to have markets and offices and buildings in all this area, we great to have it in Oldsmar. And we also have like the gateway kind of elements to it. When people come from Tampa Road, they would have this element, have like, welcome to Oldsmar, or this is Oldsmar. And so people can, can slow down from Tampa Road to go actually into the city of Oldsmar and have that street.
Further, we are also looking heavily at this area as being one of those areas that people of our generation would inhabit. And so a big part of that is having these areas that have like, have a high degree of walkability to them. So we have this road that comes off of the roundabout, actually blocked off for pedestrian traffic, so that people can engage the street in a very public way and just come, come here and, you know, read a book and just enjoy the fact that because of the height of these buildings in front of it, there is a large degree of shade here, which is obviously very important if you're going to be outside in Florida during the summer. And then we are also looking at, obviously, the condition of parking, which is, of course, a big issue in any city. And so we have parking developments here and here to kind of sort of address the issues as well as parking along all of the streets.
Here we have some render. We focus on State Street. So we, we add the program to this, which is the market. And this is State, State Street right here, that's the render for the market, which is this, this shape, you can tell from there. Also, we have this render for the theater. We have the theater, this is the theater, this is the park. Also have a section, you can see it better if I turn, I turn. So this is the theater you're looking at right here. If you sit in here and look at the theater, so this, this is the theater right behind it. So this is our render for that. You want to ask something?
So a trick to be able to read these models is actually if you get down really low and you get eye level with the street, you can actually look down and look through to get a sense of what it would be like to be on those streets.
Also, we try to create different moment, let's people, people can experience. So, you know, so there's, there's a lot of movement, beautiful movement that you can, you can experience throughout the site, not just, you know, you know, past due. We create this right about so that can slow down the traffic. Also, we figured out that there's, there's too much lane, which is five, one hill, two, three, four, five. So we decided have this optional, sometimes we can close that for, for event, in both event, and also have that moment, too.
We're so excited when we have that this spatial quality that actually Oldsmar has, like with that roundabout, and then have this closed off to have that public space, you know? And then having those people coming here and have all this activated storefronts that we talked about and breaking all those block sizes so that people feel in, like sense of enclosure, you know? And then having all of this would help people to walk from one block to the other and have all, experience Oldsmar in a way that have mix of old and new kind of concept here and have this unique identity of Oldsmar, not necessarily have to be same as Safety Harbor or Dunedin, but has its more unique to it, mixture of old and new architectural style, and bring this to the town would enhance this urban fabric.
So I know there was some concern about the roundabout when some of you first saw it during the open house. However, I actually have talked to DOT District Seven, and they are open to having a conversation. In, in, in looking at the, well, it actually makes the most sense in terms of looking at the greater area around it, as well as being able to size the roundabout correctly. So this is actually sized to correct federal standards. We've been doing a lot of work with FDOT on another project, so there's been quite a few times where we've actually talked with the engineers about it, so. it. So.
If you've got this going over to a DOT pond, I mean, there's nothing here for people to, and this is always developed. If you want to have something like this, we should have it down around St. Petersburg or somewhere over here where that can go too.
So part of the reason that the pedestrian bridges here is that there is actually some of this parcel that could be developed. And this is also where the rail line goes through. So as the rail line goes through for future development, having a multimodal transit center here where the rail line is does make a lot of sense. Bringing people in through the roundabout and allowing them to be able to get into this complex for park and ride service and things like that is also another reason why that was done in that, in that fashion. And this position.
To that point, while there is DOT pond here, there's plenty of open space along there.
Yes.
Move people into the Whitechamp Plaza, into the hotel.
Exactly. And so having the pedestrian structure be able to get people right over to the multimodal transit center and be able to traverse to this side and be able to access the, you know, the businesses and the jobs that are on the north portion of Oldsmar was the piece that they saw. So that was one of the reasons why they looked at the pedestrian bridge here versus on St. Petersburg. And it's not to say that at some point you couldn't have both, but that this was a way to have a direct connection into this area and to the multimodal transit center.
Do you ever see a point where, let's just say that he's right, that this could actually be replicated here? I mean, there's no reason in front of the theater and.
Sure.
Yeah. So I think the concept is really what we're looking at.
Yes.
You know, how it comes about.
Absolutely. So it's really about finding a consensus vision that everyone can, you know, come together on. In terms of how the details come out in the end will of course be different. And I am happy to continue helping with those conversations with DOT if that's something.
I'll tell you what, I like a lot.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't know if, I don't want to stop moving to any presentation.
They have the Tampa Road rendering.
Okay. You may ask your question.
Of course. Actually.
No, no, go ahead.
So when we were looking at the Tampa Road condition, you know, we were looking at this place that it, you know, it is Tampa Road, it is a very busy road and we have to address that in some way. But the same way, we also have to kind of look at how we can make that inviting until we look at these, look at these drawings, we're kind of engaging in a way where we're not saying, you know, you should have a party out on Tampa Road because that's, that's a terrible idea. But you should feel welcome to come into this community and come to downtown by going through Tampa Road. And further, looking at the pedestrian bridge at this position just seemed to make the most sense as far as making this density something that can actually create a fluid sort of motion through the city.
And also just to add more for this area that we rendered, it also commits the standard guidelines for Tampa corridor plans and how to have that active frontages and have awnings, canopy and all of the facades. And it all goes onto the Tampa corridor plan. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't want to get, roll into the woods with this, but I know you can make it.
Well, it wasn't really a question, it was more a comment. I'll tell you something that I really like about the design. It's something that's always been a concern that I've had looking at the amount of land we have. We're going to have a downtown. You kind of look at it, you go, it's going to be a pretty small downtown in terms of walkability. And the idea of kind of, I think that it gives it a lot more legs to draw people to it.
It's one leg.
Exactly. There's people, it's good.
It's hard to walk a one leg, so now we've got four.
Good point. But I like that, that concept of it. I don't know about the different structures and sizes and that kind of stuff, but the idea of breaking it down into smaller bite sizes almost makes you think about phases in some regard too.
That'll be watching. You'll probably never get a, that home there probably. I agree with this type of design. But what we're seeing here, it would probably never be built the way it just is.
That's not the intention.
I know that.
Okay.
I can say that now.
As long as you know it.
Yeah, I know it. Anyway, so I like that type of design. But I would like that one question. Why would you cover up City Hall with that? What was the thinking about that?
I'm thinking, I mean.
That's been talked about before, even in the original plans, that it would be expanded and maybe turned into something else.
Not like that. I'm just asking. What was the thinking behind that particular building and covering up City Hall? I mean, what you've done here is almost what you didn't, what they didn't, how to ask them with our state capital. What was the reason? Did you really have that?
Okay, so first of all, like City Hall, at the backside of it, it's just like land, nothing on it. And so we want to see like frontage because that's what we read in the standards, having the storefrontage in front of the street and having that more walkability to it. And so having the building facing on the other streets would help people to walk more on the blocks.
To me, this is the front of City Hall. To be honest with you, this size though, it's got two industrial staircases and air compressors and.
And.
I mean, I'm looking something.
I just wondered, I just wanted to know what the thinking was because to have been stolen from me, that's all.
The thinking there is that these things aren't going to pay for themselves and you need to maximize the real estate on this footprint while also addressing it in a public way. So a lot of the way we did that.
I just wanted to know what, what was the thought behind all that?
Was to increase the economic viability of this development ultimately.
And those boxes were easier to bank than smaller.
That is also true.
They had extra.
Okay, so.
I like the idea.
This area here, we don't own, so we have to look that up.
We don't know a lot of the property that's represented.
We don't own this property.
You have it not in the rest of these.
Yes, well, this site came out of doing that. So you got a land parcel created because of that. So it adds to the size of the downtown.
I drive past, I think every day, I think, good God, can something better be put there? I look at that every day and it's two big clumps of trees and I think, wow, that's a truck.
But we know we're going to develop this someday. All of this is going to be, that's not on our plan. We just haven't, we just haven't come to the right, the right plan.
Which is why I love, I love this. I love the theater because it's kind of like the old and the new. I like the urban design, but it still incorporates like the green and the wood and.
And I think the point of this is not so much, you know, what the buildings are going to look like and who's going to occupy them. But I think what I heard what went into this was, you know, the looking at what's been done in other areas and then you talk about the ratios and what makes people want to walk around. And as Eric said, you know, the four lines, I think, make people want to interact. Maybe they just interact here today or over there tomorrow. And that's what I heard out of the presentation was what's the combination of building and open space and things like that that make people want to use it and participate in? That's one of the things that I heard. What do they actually look like? You know, definitely.
Yeah, and you know, also, I think this is a very big point too here. I commented on it earlier when you were asking a question about what we kind of hoping to get. I can't figure it out for myself. It's a little bit different approach than we've, than what we've taken the last couple times. And the reason I feel that way is because call it, you know, walkability, whatever you want to call it, I look at it in my mind as connectability, like really connecting, step in the past and we worked on this. I mean, most of the discussion almost always centered around a piece of property, what structures were going on, what size, not necessarily looking at it per se and saying, how can we encourage flow from here to the park?
Well, we never have had that.
Right. And that was kind of part of what the, like the bigger piece of connectivity.
This kind of design, I mean, I'm told, this right here, that's exactly how we should do it.
I like the pedestrian bridge. It do have made sense because right now if we put pedestrian bridge out, it's not going to be in the bound with the end of State Street, you'd go five blocks.
Well, if you do, I mean, the idea is to put the density here, that, you know, the mass transit hub and all of this and livable, workable, shopable, usable, you know, and I think this text connects with all the others. I like it.
Well, great. And that's a good segue into our next one.
You said parking was here and, and of course that obviously could change. I mean, parking could be in any one of these.
Well, and likely there, there'll be parking built into some of the others as well, but those are the large structures.
Yeah. And that is just after that. That's the.
This is more of a material study.
Yep. I love it. I love that. What's the first movie? E.T.
E.T. E.T.
Yeah. Yeah, they're recording that. Yeah. Exactly.
Water is out. Mike?
Okay. You talking about when we're down there, Mike?
Yes.
When we're down there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So our next group is looking at the connection from State Street to the water. So Ariana, or who's starting?
My name is Emily Clark. It's, we also have Courtney Cook and Ariana Delgado. And we focused on the corridor connections made from the downtown area to the waterfront, which is Ariold's Park. The first one starts basically as a look at Oldsmar. We have on here this word bubble, which actually we took from our charrette we did here. And I compiled all of the words that were, that were suggested for the innovation. Those are from city council members as well as some citizens that live here. So it kind of gave us an idea of where we wanted to go with it. And these are some ideas of some things we wanted to do focusing on these beautiful wide medians that are on the boulevards that lead down into the park as well as the park area and just enhancing the amenities that are already there. We have a timeline here which represents the history, which has a really rich history. We all know that from Ariold's creating it 100 years ago. We had a lot of fun learning about it and it really inspired us to do some great things. We also looked at a lot of like statistical things, demographics, learning what kind of people live here, what they do, do they work here, do they leave for work? So that's what these studies are. The land area use, where the parks are, where the schools are. So we need the next one. So we learned a lot about what people want to do here just from listening to the citizens as well as researching. And as Taryn said, also, we were really looking forward to what we wanted out of a city if we were looking for somewhere to live. So the last one I have, looking at the layers of the city, this one has to do with transportation, which we definitely focused on in our presentation. Where the streets are, bike lanes, sidewalks, how people get around, if it's walkable, if it's bikeable. So just basically looking at it and how we can improve on it.
So as the previous group already mentioned, we did a precedent study in Washington DC and Alexandria, Virginia. And from this small map here, you can kind of see the resemblance of the city of Oldsmar and the lawn plan. The studies that we did were mainly the street sections and how they were divided, the ratio of the length of the actual street section versus the height of the building, which is very important in Washington DC. It's actually a one to one and then they bump it up 0.5 at the top. So they go in and then they go back up again. So these are three sections from DC. And then you can see down here Alexandria is a much smaller town, but it's very dense still within the integrated median. To talk a little bit about the framework that we had kind of developed here, we're focusing on a linear park structure, which is the medians, that kind of the big view and then park. And what we want to do is incorporate hardscape down the center of them to kind of generate activity and allow the residents to come out and enjoy the space that's already there. We've widened the medians by five feet. You've already got space for two cars to travel down the road in each direction. So by widening that median, it kind of tightens the road a little bit and allows people to travel slower to kind of engage in the, the area around it and help them to get out and get on the median and engage with what's on the median. We also want to incorporate a bike share. It's going to be designed to just get you sufficiently from point A to point B. It could either be totally free or depending on how long you, you want the bike for, you could implement some kind of payment process for it. The area is mainly residential, but stations will be incorporated throughout to allow people that are coming in to visit maybe loved ones that are working at Nielsen or Lockheed Martin or just coming in to go to like the horse tracks or whatever, to bring them down into the city of Oldsmar and help them to actually visualize the exterior. We want to incorporate a trolley system that is going to be able to be implemented permanently, perhaps. I know you guys already have some sort of a trolley system that you all used during the centennial.
Yes, we did.
So we kind of want to go off of that and make it more of a permanent system. The streets as a shared system, we are incorporating on-street parking down towards Ariold's Park as well as on-street parking down towards the downtown area and also enhancing the public realm. We've got two roundabout systems down at the park to help bring people into the park as well as to slow down the traffic once you get down there to visualize what's inside the park. And all kinds of different lighting throughout to emphasize the medians, the, allow for more safety within the park and also to kind of showcase what it is that the medians actually entail.
So after looking at all this research and creating an urban design framework, we came up with a master plan for Park Boulevard. So starting at State Street, we wanted to create a strong connection to Ariold's. By activating the medians, we really want to draw not only residents but visitors to the area. So starting near State Street, perhaps there's a market going on. So people coming to visit the shops and the new mixed use can actually interact with residents and local business people. As you move further down, each median actually has a different activity for residents to come and interact. This actually makes the walk from State Street to Ariold's a lot shorter by giving opportunities for people to engage with one another. As we reach Ariold's Park, there will be a transit hub. Now this allows people to move and actually park and visit Ariold's Park. We will actually be, okay. So within these systems, the trolley transit system will actually start at the, the.
It's going to start within the CRA, which is this map here. So it's blown up. This is the initial phase one per se. The bike share locations, same thing, it's going to start within the CRA and then work its way out once it becomes more incorporated within the actual, the city and people become more aware of what's actually going on. And then the special event trolley is going to be within the CRA as well. And then once it becomes more known and more generated throughout the city, it will travel up to the horse track up here, the flea market, BMX, down to the zip line and could also act as something, even if it wasn't like a event trolley per se, to, to transport business people that don't want to go get their car out of the parking garage and go to lunch. They could take the transit downtown to go get lunch and then they could easily take the transit back up to wherever it is that they, they'd be up in this area where Lockheed Martin is and then over here where Nielsen is.
So within the linear park, we've actually called it Greater and Greener. We are going to be giving back 73,497 square feet to Park Boulevard. By creating a linear park, this will be an extension of Ariold's. Um, by creating a linear park, this will be an extension of RE Olds Park. Um, and within the actual RE Olds Park, um, by removing a parking lot which doesn't have very good lighting and isn't used all of the time, we can actually give back 15,000 square feet to RE Olds, um, in order to put these parking spaces back for visitors to still be able to look at the park. Uh, we've implemented street parking, um, even parking within this drop-off loop. Uh, we've actually created an additional nine parking spaces even with removing this parking lot. Um, the programming for the main squares, starting at State Street would be a market, a community garden, a butterfly garden, an extension of RE Olds Park, and then an actual life-sized chess square where people and community members can come play chess, interact with their children, and really begin to communicate.
This board kind of just emphasizes what she talked about with, um, some visuals for the different median, uh, call-outs. Doesn't necessarily have to be in this order or even be these, uh, particular things, but we've got the, the market square where they have a little bit of a market activity down by, um, City Hall. Uh, community garden, which we don't want to take away from the community garden that y'all already have, but we want to, uh, incorporate another one and allow for the people that live on Park to be able to grow their own vegetables, grow their own fruit, grow their own herbs, whatever fit. Um, they also spoke, I believe it was Gabby, was talking about how you want flowers and a nice canopy of interesting, cool little things to look at. So, we have a butterfly garden, which has, um, beautiful flowers to attract butterflies. Um, and then as Ariana was talking about, the life-sized chess, which, um, I don't know if any of you ever been to a KOA, but they have the giant life-sized chess things, which are fantastic. And you could also do checkers for those that, you know.
Aren't as smart.
Aren't as smart.
I'm the checker kind of vice mayor.
Me too.
I'll just call myself.
I prefer checkers myself. Did I turn it off? The, uh, the, the roundabouts down towards the bottom, just to kind of, uh, bring some visual engagement from the, uh, City Hall all the way down this view corridor into RE Olds Park. And renderings.
And those are shaded tree canopies down the medians and up.
Yeah, if you actually, when y'all want to come down and look at the model. Oh, we'd like to invite you down to look at our models. Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'm just.
So, we're spinning the model so that you can actually see the view corridors. So, part of those fanning streets and the width of those boulevards is so that you actually have a view down to the water. And that was part of the original plan and that was what was the intention of that original plan. So, one of the things that they're using the structure out in the water and the boardwalk for is to enhance that view corridor. So, if you get down low and look through those trees, you'll actually be able, thanks, you'll actually be able to see all the way to the water. And so, the, the color of the roof is one of those, you know, kind of pops that would draw your eyes. So, you'd be able to actually see it all the way through the corridor as you approach that. Um, and you'll actually be able to see it as you look through that corridor as well. And so, both of these corridors give you a view and, and enhance that intentional view corridor to the waterfront. And the big chess boards are actually in the model.
Oh, okay, in the median.
Yeah, so the median is no longer really a median. It's now a linear park in the middle of the boulevard.
And you, uh, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but you had done some research on the 580 and what DOT thinks of that. Any research or thoughts on how viable that is to actually pull off?
The boardwalk.
Yeah.
I love the idea.
Love the idea.
I love the idea.
Sure.
Um, in terms of this boardwalk?
Yeah, just the whole, anything.
Even then, we're connecting it over.
Yeah, um, and that's something that we can look further, uh, into, um, for the final report when we go to get it in place. Um, since this piece is here, there's a precedent for it already. So, it would be a matter of the way in which it's constructed and if you have to go through Army Corps for those permissions and, um, you can do boardwalks, uh, and oftentimes if they're wooden, depending on the type of structure to the bottom or if they're floating, they're, they're often considered temporary structures and the permitting process is a little easier and different. So, depending on the way in which it's constructed, it can be easier to get it, uh, implemented.
I have a dock that goes right here.
So, you want to connect?
You want us to put that in the model?
I don't think we.
About all the work going through it. I mean, I'll sell you just my dock. It's already there, there's a precedent.
Um, you guys were mentioning earlier in the beginning of the presentation, just about the amphitheater seating, that it was impervious or concrete, I think. Was, was it you that was mentioning that?
Impervious.
Okay. Okay. I like it, I love it.
Sort of like that.
So, um, these are some of the elements that went into the park. I know there's already a lot of, um, things there and we just thought of some ways to improve the space and really draw people in. Um, we consolidated the, the park and like the more adult gym equipment into one area so that everybody can gather in one space. Um, we also created, um, a small art area. So, it's going to be like, um, an outdoor art feature where you can walk through and the art will be, um, displayed outside but be encased. I know there was a lot of, um, a lot of push for more art in the city, which really, um, livens it up. I think I heard something about a mural going up. Yeah. So, I mean, stuff like that really, um, gives culture into the city. Um, and then we also, we did a mound as well. So, this is, um, not something that goes into the ground, but it actually raises a little bit. Um, so if you see in this one right here, it's, um, like a space that you can just relax on, read a book. There's, um, some shade structures up there and, uh, for just everyday use and, uh, as well as when there's concerts, um, there's like inserts inside that provide, um, some small lighting for, um, uh, traffic to go through and then as well as speakers so that the people that are sitting way in the back can experience, um, what's going on as well.
It's the same thing, yeah.
This structure right here.
I know how big the amphitheater is, that thing's.
This is actually mostly a roof for, um, shade structure.
Okay.
As, um, growing up in Florida, uh, a lot of us probably did. You know, the, the worst thing about being outside in Florida is just the sun, it's so hot. Um, it makes you not want to go outside. This is actually mostly shade structure. There's a small building inside and we're calling it a pop-up. And what a pop-up is, is, um, a building that's put there without, um, one, one particular use. It can be used by, um, different vendors that, um, want to set up shop in there. It could be a coffee house, it could be a wine bar. Eventually it could turn into a permanent establishment, a permanent restaurant. But it's something that can be used for different things. And, uh, that's one of those things that really draws people out to a space is where they can, um, just purchase things from, whether it's just a, a drink or a meal for the day. It really, um, is a key feature to making it a, a lively and, um, used part. Um, we also have this pier, which, um, pending the building code for putting this dock here. Um, it really symbolizes, um, the, the intention of our project when you're coming down one of these boulevards, which, going back to the Lawn Fawn's Plan, um, every time you, you turn into a boulevard in Washington DC, you see a monument. Um, and whether it, um, gives you direction of where you are or it just maybe gives you inspiration like, oh, this is my city, you know, it stands for something. That's what we're kind of going for here. You look at it and you see it and, uh, maybe it's just a destination point somewhere you want to go that you see it from, um, these view corridors. So, that's why, um, we have this right here as well as extended this, um, eh, eh, a jogging pier or, or just an activity just to walk on. It's really, um, in my experience, better to be out into the water than, um, back here behind all the mangroves, I guess, um, with the breeze and everything. And then we also have, um, of course, the transit hub. So, this is, um, a traffic directional, um, implement that we did that, um, these, these streets right here are actually all cut, color or, um, made in the same material as the sidewalks in here because what a shared street is, is a place where, um, pedestrians walk, cars drive, bikes ride, and no one really has a right-of-way. It's a shared space that you slow down and, um, everybody shares it and it just creates a more, um, livable space. You don't have to fear for your life when you're crossing the street. Um, this isn't like the busiest street in the city, so it shouldn't be, um, an issue with slowing down, down traffic or anything. Um, there's also going to be parking along the street, which adds to the fact that you shouldn't be going 50 miles an hour down the street. It's a residential, it's a park, i- it's made for everyone to share visitors, um, and residents as well.
I love the idea of removing the parking lot too and having the street parking. I think that's great. I love it. When do we dig?
It could happen tonight. I really like that.
I love the amphitheater.
I like how it all ties together. I think that's what's.
I love the boardwalk and the roundabouts.
And I think this, I mean, I think this is one of the things that we talked about. You know, that it really is a way underutilized space, the boulevards that we have. They're beautiful, but I think they're really underutilized.
I like how you added the parking with the street and the parking.
So, has anybody done any? So, has anyone done any kind of estimate of cost?
$500.
I just have to ask that.
The million-dollar question, isn't it?
Yeah, it is more than a million. I, I started out, um. I started out with like really, um, I don't know, small ideas, I guess you could call them because I was thinking, you know, if, if it was going to start tomorrow with a small budget and I was told, look, just, just, you need to do something bigger because whether it gets done tomorrow doesn't matter, it could be done in 10 years, but it's going to benefit the community. The bigger you think, the better the community's going to be. So, no, we haven't looked at, um, cost budget, but that's something that you could always, um, cut something out or wait till later if it's, you know, not in the budget. But, um, I'll, I think some of my things, um, were cost-friendly. I mean, I, I envisioned the park equipment to be pretty much the same, but maybe just relocated, stuff like that.
And to that question, I guess, and I don't know if this is part of the final product, but I'll probably forget the question if I don't ask it now. Is, do you see a phasing of this? Is this something that will be part of maybe the final project as how you, with all the research that you did in DC and all that, how you would implement something and phase this type of a project, be it this or, or the, you know, the State Street area and, and how you would build to get to the final hurrah?
Yeah, so we'll give you kind of, um, a, a general phasing plan in terms of like, begin with this infrastructure and then move toward this and then, you know, build it, you know, bigger and bigger that you can do it gradually.
Sure. Great. Any other questions? Great. Onto the number three?
Onto number three.
Actually, you can use both of these if you want.
We can talk each, talk over each other.
Talk over each other. Radio 101. And having done presentations to the DOT, I really appreciate your board co-op. What do you call it? Choreography, yeah, that's what I meant. This one out, that one in. You guys have been busy since we last saw you.
They have been.
Hi, my name is Corey Anderson. I'm here with, uh, my group members, Vivi Lowry, Alicia Martinez, and Larry Reposo. Our focus was along St. Petersburg Drive, uh, near the, uh, the library and the Galleria. This first board is just kind of a, uh, overview of the Tampa Bay area with regards to Pinellas and Hillsborough County. Kind of looking into some of the large-scale businesses in these areas. It's kind of an economic study of Tampa Bay.
So, then we started, I'm Lawrence, by the way. Um, we started looking at the history and how it could potentially, um, how it could influence the way that we think about the overall space. And then we started mapping out the major landmarks, which includes the Oldsmar BMX, the trails, the elementary schools, the RE Olds Park, City Hall, Community, United Methodist Church, the Galleria, the Oldsmar Public Library, the Bicentennial Park, the Oldsmar Trails, the Forest Lakes Elementary School, and the Tampa Bay Downs.
The next thing we looked at was the population and wealth and we made a diagram of it. And then we divided the city into layers and we looked at the circulation, residential and commercial.
We did some analysis of the transportation system that goes through Oldsmar and we started mapping out all the highways and, as well as the, uh, bus systems and mapping out all of, uh, the bus stops themselves. And we realized that, um, some of the bus stops are actually only on a call basis where, um, if you want to utilize it, you have to call them in order for the bus to come. And then we started mapping out from those previous landmarks. There's a theory that, um, somebody, a person is only comfortable walking, um, five minutes or how many minutes? Five minutes, yeah. Which is a quarter-mile radius. So, we started mapping out, um, quarter-mile radiuses from these landmarks and we started looking at where each area has the most potential. And also looking at, um, how Oldsmar has evolved over the years, um, given that the Gandy Ridge was built.
And, um, when we visited Oldsmar, we noticed that there was three, um, specific strong entity, entities that they had, which was, uh, commercial area where the State Street lies and then, um, the residential area and then the, um, there's the parks at the end of the bay. And they were kind of culturally segregated, so we thought, um, we, it was our responsibility to integrate them, um, especially since, um, St. Petersburg Drive was, um, the site that we chose. And it was, um, in between where the State Street, State Street area was and the residential area was. And we did precedent studies on cities that, um, were successful in, um, integrating historical buildings with, um, new developments and, um, made good use of public spaces. So, we studied Copenhagen and how, um, after the Second World War, they traded, um, they took their major street and they traded all of the, um, parking and they took out cars completely and dedicated, um, time to making, time and money into making public spaces for people. And, um, now they're considered one of the happiest cities in the world because, um, of all the, um, pedestrian activity going on and, um, more people are talking to, like you're walking, um, in these public spaces, talking to strangers you would never talk to. Um, and another city we studied was, um, London and, um, they're really good with, um, branding. So, when they have hosted the, um, Olympics, they were, um, good at branding the way they, um, advertise the city and, um, they have a lot of old Victorian buildings that they don't necessarily demolish and they maintain the shell of the building, but, um, add modern developments to it. And we also studied, um, a lot of Florida buildings during, um, the 1930s from, to the 1970s. And, um, modern architecture became something important during this time in Florida because, um, they studied principles of how to, uh, work with the landscape here and, um, uh, dealing with the sun and, um, shading for the buildings.
Then we looked at the existing section of Oldsmar and what it's. Then we looked at the existing section of Oldsmar, and what it's, what it is, well, it's limited business office structures, no unique buildings really in this area on St. Peters Drive, no public interaction, no drawing factor to the street. And then we created two new sections of the city, and we created a bar, bike lanes, a street, more street parking, and then more green space on the other side, like a public theater, and then a pop-up cafe, food truck parking for people, for public people.
The whole idea was basically trying to go from
It's on, it's on. It just fades in and out.
Going from a streetscape where there's not much interaction to something that is utilized all throughout the day, whether it be a family just walking along the sidewalks, or people riding their bikes, or things as simple and easy as bringing in food trucks and pop-up cafes and creating new green spaces.
And before you go on, Mike, can you keep the camera on the boards, please? Because unless you're standing or sitting over there, you really can't see what's up there.
Ah, there it is.
And this board we have here is kind of, it's an urban design framework board, so it's kind of looking into this sort of structure that we focus around the first, there's four bullet points, the first being a cultural infrastructure, kind of creating this sort of social interaction space within Oldsmar. The second being a residential infrastructure, creating more density within Oldsmar. The third being an entertainment infrastructure, again reinforcing a kind of social interaction between people. That's mainly focused around this, the library being a kind of entertainment node within Oldsmar. And then the fourth being a public space infrastructure. So, again, more social, social interaction.
And the first phase of the development would be to offer a new residential development. And most of the development down there right now is single-family houses. So we wanted to offer more, they're still individual homes, but it's more workable within an urban setting. So we were going to do, we were going to offer townhouses along the area. And it doesn't necessarily mean they have to be where we place them, but it's just an idea of how perhaps like new, younger people would want to live in a kind of home like that. So they could either be something permanent or something temporary for someone to live.
Also, when looking at the placement of all the housing and the residential aspect, we kind of looked to placing it near the library and kind of the idea of having all of these families in this one area where the library can be fully utilized.
And the last board we have is the overall plan of just the general idea that we have. So we have, we have the townhomes, which would be in these areas. And then the outdoor theater, which could partnership with maybe something in another city, like Mahaffey or Stroud Theater, just to economically tie it into the rest of Tampa Bay. And it would benefit the library also, because it can, it's not just for movies, but perhaps lectures or things like that. And we have commercial buildings that would be for offices and retail or restaurants. And we heard from the mayor last time that the gallery is gonna, or the bar in the Galleria might be leaving soon. So we've developed a portion of the project where that would be dedicated just to bars. So it's three different buildings, but, or it's this area that has three different buildings just for bars or breweries. And we also developed a parking complex, which would be, this is St. Petersburg Drive, and Tampa Road is right here. So when you drive straight into the CRA area, or on, through St. Petersburg Drive, there'd be a parking complex. And the first floor would be just retail small shops, and the second floor, we imagine to be a grocery store or a fitness center. And the two, the top two floors would be dedicated to the garage. So it's the idea about being able to park in one spot and wanting to walk everywhere and have, leave your car there the entire day. And that's why we kind of sculpted the landscape for an enjoyable, walkable
Yeah, you guys can come down and look at the model if you want.
So this is, this is St. Petersburg Drive, and then we actually, the block is actually this large, and we cut the block in half with the road that we created, because the block is kind of
It's the library.
Yeah, that's the library, this is the Galleria.
Oh, the block is kind of large, so we wanted to make it more manageable, and dedicate one area into a concentrated public space for people to promote more pedestrian activity.
And we also realized how large the actual block was. So instead of creating just a face of retail, we decided to situate buildings facing inside of the block, so that way pedestrian comes by and then starts leading them within it and to utilize the entire plaza or square.
Townhouses. And this is, yeah, this is like a bigger scale of that, so more detail. And this, and that's the, that would be, that's, this is a section of the model, so it's cut out of this. And this is the bar, Galleria. This would be the parking complex with the retail on the bottom, grocery store parking on top. And then some of the commercial buildings with the offices and the retail. And then behind the theater, we have, what, what would you call that? Gazeevo, not a gazebo. A trellis.
The idea of the theater was that, like, this area is heavily like culturally based with the, with reading and the arts. So we started thinking about gaining a relationship with, like, the Stroud Center, Mahaffey, Ruth Eckard, and getting a movie screen or a stage and having events start taking place in the space. And then the trellis in the back sort of forms this semi-private area, semi-private but public area for people who just checked out a book and they want to go sit in a partially shaded area, read their book, or eat their lunch, anything like that. The, the parking structure actually does have enough square footage for Trader Joe's or Whole Foods, stuff like that.
It does meet the urban square footage, I guess.
I like the idea of the, of the road, just to really give another access point and kind of separates the, kind of the residential.
I didn't realize the block was up there.
It's like water, concrete, like water
Yeah.
The original plan, I think we had saw for this site, it was, they extended the, they extended, I think they extended the water line for the DOT area. But, so we just, we kind of sculpted it to work as a water feature also, instead of just being just, just strictly retention.
How do you cut your mowers?
We have a, we have a laser cutter that
Laser?
Yeah.
They have to draw it off first.
It's funny, remember when we were having our workshop about whether to put a, like, a little, they go, how small we were thinking in there as to how detailed this is.
We couldn't even come to a agreement.
On this corner. I love it, you guys did a great job.
We, we also, well, we also added more crosswalks per square mile, or square foot because of adding more walkability. Yeah. No jaywalking either.
Any questions? I love the way it's set over there on that. Because I know originally you had kind of parks on both corners, which underutilized those kind of two key components to that intersection.
We decided to add more housing just to further the density of the area. We figured that this plaza would really not work if we didn't have the density of the housing and the people to support it.
Sorry, I didn't have that coming. Sorry.
Can you just repeat that? I guess we're calling it a year.
Really interesting housing there.
The other reason is the, the property owner of that site is actually really interested in putting housing there, so they thought they'd give him a good idea.
He wanted to make sure it was on there before he got it.
Any questions about any of the projects?
No, I think, I mean, again, I love the way you guys tied it all together. You've broken apart, but yet tied it all together. I think that was one of the interesting things. It shows that kind of the, what I envision from our workshop was how you, was how you kind of tie all the different aspects of our city together, and not just State Street or Main Street, but really utilize, you know, the waterfront, the State Street, the St. Pete Drive. We've got some, you know, great opportunities to really showcase the city, and I think this really tied them all together. And, you know, I could see somebody spending a day here, renting a bike, riding around, doing the trolley. I love the idea, you know, of if, you know, obviously down the road, if this came to fruition, that, you know, you would have a trolley that would go through, past Nielsen and all around, and bring them around, so that they're not getting in their car and going and, you know, clogging up the roads again, so.
I think that when you look at all the different components put together, it certainly does more than look at just State Street, right? Which was really a goal. But from a practical standpoint, for us as a council, and being practical about it, I think what's going to be a really important component of the work that you all have done is to, based on your research, what are the, what are the suggested phases to start that path? And, you know, as we look at it, you know, what is it specifically in this phase that we think makes sense, that we don't think is financially a good return on investment per se?
And like Kickstarter.
Right. And start the phasing. And so from that standpoint, I think, I think you all did a good job. And I was kind of a critic, but I'm not anymore.
I would just like to say a couple things real fast. All of you did an amazing job. One thing I really noticed, you all work really well together as a team, which is really important. It seems like you all get together, work together well, and I'm really impressed, especially how you did your homework going to Washington DC and the other areas with the cobblestone. I really liked those ideas, how you were concerned about the water, making sure it flowed correctly. Great job, all of you. Very impressed. The hard work you did, the graphics, I'm in the graphics business, A-plus. These laser models you did, fantastic, I love everything you did. I don't know if this is going to happen like in the next five years, not really sure, but you should all be proud of yourself, you did a great job, and all be proud of yourself for all the hard work you put into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to say that I think one of the things that this does give us, and some of our landowners that own property that are part of these developments are here, what it does give us is something visual, that if we as a council, you know, whether you buy into it 80% or 90%, or, you know, you know, we didn't expect, and I got asked by one of our, you know, writers, what I expected. I said, I never expected to have 100% of everything, you know, that's, that'd be a pipe dream, but to have a concept that then we can maybe take to partners, and as Vice Mayor Seidel said, you know, maybe there's something, and we've talked about this before at the property next door, maybe there is something that we can put in there as a city, a park or something that might spark other interest. But also, especially like in the State Street area, you know, it gives us something to potentially go to partners that might be interested in buying into the idea, because now we've got a bigger vision. You know, you might be able to get a corporate company to come in and move in here, or you might get a Trader Joe's, or, you know, if they see the bigger picture in what we're looking at, it's easier to sell. And, you know, we've even, Bruce, our city manager, you know, it's in the budget to tear the buildings down next door at some point, so people can envision, you know, this. And as we've all said today, I don't think we realized how big that piece of property is. I mean, you drive by the library and you think it's a big thing until you see it swallowed up by the rest of the property that we own there. So I think you guys have done a great job. So, and the one thing that I want to say, and we talked about this at the beginning, is, you know, what was our objective from this? And, you know, Gabby's the youngest one of us on the city council, and what we wanted was something that the next generation wants to see, what's important to them, the walkability, the features that they like, you know, the parks and the open space, and, you know, that's what we want, so that we can leave that for our kids and our grandkids to enjoy and want to be here. I think that was one of the important components, was we were missing it. I mean, I got to be honest, we were missing the picture of what's important to people now. And as Councilmember Soraki said, going to DC and finding out, find out the things that are working in, throughout the United States, and that, that people like, you know, why reinvent the wheel? If somebody's already done the homework on it, you know, we just emulate it and, you know, put your own ownership on it. But I think that's a very important takeaway from this project, is I think it's something that's definitely modern, on the edge, as I say, so. Yeah. I'm buying this one, Gabby's buying this one, Seidel's buying this one. Oh, okay, oh, fine. Fine, good, yes.
One last thing I forgot to mention is the concept of the bikes and the walking, how you took the parked streets and you changed the size and added the parking. I love riding my bike. And that was a great, great idea, how you handled that, how you put that all together, and how you presented it to us. I really think that's one of the first things as a council we should really talk about. That's a great idea. Thank you so much.
I think it gives purpose to those boulevards. You know, they're, they're beautiful, but I really think it gives purpose to them. And people want to interact with them. I love driving down them, but I would rather do more on them, and I think the biking is great.
Your first phasing step would really just be a matter of repainting, in terms of restriping those boulevards, before you actually did any digging or infrastructure work. You could actually change the nature of them.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And that's pretty cheap.
Yep. You guys have anything else? And we can go back up here and have a little dialogue.
I want to get a picture of everybody in here before we leave.
That's awesome.
And all those boards and models, of course, are part of what stays with us.
You, you will get them back. We have to take them back with us. They have to show the rest of the school what they've been up to, and then they will all be coming back here. So, Marie, I hope you have a big enough space for them.
I hope so.
Just to that point, what is your next step with them? I don't know what you're doing as a class, but if you're presenting to the rest of the school, I'd love to be there. I think it would be great to, you know, be a part of that and hear the reaction and see what the next step is.
Great. So I'm going to be following up when we come, when we get back tomorrow. Some of the other urban design classes will be presenting tomorrow. We have an open house on Friday evening, and you can actually come to the university. And I think it starts at 6:30, 6:30, and you can actually see all of the different work that takes place in the school. It'll all be on display.
And that's the day that you're doing it? Because Friday's our city golf tournament, so I'm not sure, of course.
Where is it going to be? Do you have an address?
Yes. So the address is 4202 East Fowler Avenue. That's the USF Tampa campus.
All right.
And it's in the, what they call the HMS building. And it's in the, what they call the HMS building, which is on Holly Drive. So, if you take the main entrance, which is Leroy Collins, make a right on Alumni Drive, and a left on Maple. It's Maple, not Holly. Why didn't anybody correct me?
If I type this in.
They were afraid we were gonna come, they were afraid we were gonna come and recreate the drama part. Like, perfect, teach, give them the wrong address.
So, it's, it's on Maple. So, you're gonna just, it'll, you'll go past the sun dome, and then it'll come up on your left. There's a parking lot out in front.
If we put the address in, will Waze find it?
Oh, Waze will find it.
Yes, if you do, um, USF School of Architecture and Community Design, um, you can do like Google directions and it'll, it'll navigate it. It'll actually find it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, 6:30, the building will be open. You'll see people there, and all the studios will have all the work on display.
Awesome. Well, I, I have to say this. I mean, I think the workshop was a, was a great start. Um, the presentation at the library was very interesting, and I think you got some feedback as to some of the things that might or might not work in some of the areas. I know the DOT pond and the corners of State and St. Pete Drive, but that wasn't that long ago. And to take it to this, I think you've done, you guys have done a tremendous job. And I really want to thank you guys for, for what you've done.
And Doug, you mentioned that, you know, we may not get 90% or 100%. I mean, I feel like we got 150% of. I had no idea.
No, my point was, I don't know that we would implement 100% of it, because it might not be cost effective or, yeah, but from what we asked for, I, we did get that. Can we implement all of it? That's it. Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah, absolutely. So, thank you so much, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you to all of you for your comments, and again, for the opportunity, um, to get the students involved in the project.
Well, we hope they had a great experience as well, so. Who's graduating? Everybody?
Not yet.
Who's moving Oldsmar?
I think there's a few of them that would come, right?
Yeah. Awesome. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Um, our next agenda item is, where are we? Our consent docket, only one item approved the tentative agenda for May 17th, 2016.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. This next part's not going to go very long. I know you guys gotta get this stuff out of here, so. Um, next is our city attorney.
Yes, so item number five on your agenda is the second final reading in public hearing of ordinance 2015-16. I'll read that by title only. Ordinance 25, uh, 2015-16, an ordinance to the City of Oldsmar, Florida, amending in its entirety Article VI of Part III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oldsmar relating to flood control, stormwater management, and wetlands protection, adopting flood hazard maps, designating a floodplain administrator, adopting procedures and criteria for development in flood hazard areas, and for other purposes. Amending Section 3.4.4 of the Town Center Development Code to delete the minimum base floor elevation requirements within the Town Center Residential District. Amending Section 3.5.4 of the Town Center Development Code to delete the minimum base floor elevation requirements within the Town Center Boulevard District. Adopting local technical amendments to the Florida Building Code, providing for applicability, severability, and an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2015-16 by title only.
This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on this item? This is the second reading. Hearing no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Seidel?
Yes.
Councilmember Soraki?
Yes.
Councilmember McKee? Councilmember Beavillan?
Yes.
Mayor Beavis?
Aye.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2015-16, amending Article VI of Part III of the Code of Ordinances, Land Development Code, Flood Control, Stormwater Management, and Wetland Protection, is adopted with 5-0-4 and 0 against.
Item number six on your agenda is the second final reading in public hearing of ordinance 2016-04. I'll read that by title only. Ordinance 2016-04, an ordinance to the City of Oldsmar, Florida, vacating a portion of the southeasterly half of Palmetto Circle and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2016-04 by title only.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to address this? I see the landowner is here. You all good? All good. Uh, seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Seidel?
Yes.
Councilmember Soraki?
Yes.
Councilmember McKee?
Yes.
Councilmember Beavillan?
Yes.
Mayor Beavis?
Aye.
It's kind of funny, real quick, how we, we're getting rid of that last circle that you and I talked about, and they're talking about bringing them back. You know, the roundabouts.
History repeats itself. Holding on it, that's the difference.
I sure appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks for coming.
I'd be wanting to be something on my problem.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2016-04, vacating Palmetto Circle adjacent to 3870 Tampa Road, is adopted with 5-0-4 and 0 against.
Uh, item number seven is the first reading in public hearing of ordinance 2016-05. I'll read that by title only. Ordinance 2016-05, an ordinance declaring the intention of the City of Oldsmar, Florida, to annex certain real property located in Section 22 Township 28 South Range 16 East, further described as 3159 Phoenix Avenue, parcel number 22281696660 dash 00, I'm sorry, dash 0110060, into the corporate limits of the City of Oldsmar, providing for the effective date of ordinance. That was the first reading of ordinance 2016-05 by title only.
This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to address the public? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none? What's the saying?
Welcome to Oldsmar.
One at a time. One at a time. No discussion, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Seidel? Councilmember Soraki?
Yes.
Councilmember McKee?
Yes.
Councilmember Beavillan?
Absolutely.
Mayor Beavis?
Aye.
First reading of ordinance 2016-05, annexing 3159 Phoenix Avenue into the corporate limits of the City of Oldsmar, passes with 5-0-4 and 0 against.
That's all I have, thank you. You, city manager?
I'm good.
Thank you. City clerk?
I'm clear.
All good, thank you. City council, next is schedule a work session on the capital improvement program, CIP. We have some preferred dates, and those are?
Tuesday, May 24th, or Thursday, May 26th at 4:00 PM, here in the work session room.
24th is good for me.
My preference would be the 24th as well.
I can do either.
Really?
I know.
Let's do it both days, then. Since we, can we schedule something on Thursday, since we have Gabby? Uh, Tuesday's good for me. How about you, retired guy?
He's busy.
He's busy on that Tuesday? At cha-cha lessons or something? Let's do the Tuesday, so it keeps in line with our council stuff. It's easier for me to remember. Tuesday, the 24th?
That's right, yes.
Next is select representative to the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. This is a position that Vice Mayor Seidel, uh, currently has, and due to a work arrangement that he has going on and the complexity of his schedule, um, we would like to try and fill that. If you could give us a reader's digest version, I think I'll probably do it, but of what's expected of them and how often they meet?
They meet once a month. Um, and during the summer months, they don't meet. It has a pretty wide range agenda. I think probably, uh, the greatest value to our representation there, uh, is the opportunity, frankly, to network with other elected officials. Uh, some of the work that they used to do as it relates to DRIs and that kind of stuff really doesn't take place anymore.
Yep.
Are gutted to the point.
So, uh, you know, I would say that, uh, you know, there's value in the sense of meeting other people. Um, and so from that perspective, it's, it's probably worth attending.
Yeah.
I wouldn't expect to see a lot of action there.
No, but I think, and I've been a big proponent of regional planning, both from a transit standpoint, you know, sports authority standpoint. And I mean, I think regional is good, and anytime we as a city can get a voice in that, in that arena, I don't think it can hurt. Whether they're effective or not, that's.
I suggest, Mayor, you take it.
That's right.
Well, Mayor, before, you and I had this conversation last year. I mentioned to you that I wanted to do that, and now that Eric, I, I'm willing to do it.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, if you want it, you can have it, but I, as I told you last year, we had that conversation.
Sure. And the only reason I say this, cause if I'm on the board of the PSTA, and I might be on there for another year and a half, which is a regional transportation thing, and we're trying to kind of blend the two heart and PSTAs together, but you're more than welcome to have it if you want.
Well, this, this particular, by the way, this particular board means nothing about anybody anymore to any city, almost to any county.
Well, I just want you to say, I want you to know that I fulfilled the expectations remarkably.
Yeah, yes, you have. The only thing that's possible is what Eric has said, Councilman.
Networking about.
Networking. Other than that, it is a absolutely dead board.
Well, I can't make a motion, so somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make a motion for Dan to.
Second, do we have a second? Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who are we electing?
That passes four to, four to abstained.
I'll keep you guys updated.
Are you gonna vote?
He has to vote.
Done that thing five years when it was important.
You told me that.
Wait, so you're saying that you buried it?
No.
All right. We've had enough chitter chatter tonight, so you're on. TBRPC, there you are.
Got it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thanks. And keep us up to date. Next?
Any questions, I'll ask you.
Next item is council member comments, and we'll start down at the right, cause he's older than dirt. Councilmember Beavillan.
I want to congratulate, uh, Ann on the cancer walk of life. I think next year, the council should probably really dive into this thing and make it even a greater success that it possibly could have been this year without the rain. It, you know, and, and I agree with Ann. It is, uh, it is pathetic that they did not go all night long. I hated to see Ann work, I don't know, you walked 25 miles or 100 miles, what, all the way to see each half hour of the sunset. That was amazing. And your quote was amazing. I appreciate that. But, you know, the first year we had that, I was mayor, and it went into 12 o'clock the next Sunday.
It's really, and Ann will tell you this, it's really lost its purpose.
It, it has totally lost its purpose, and that is sad. And so I would suggest that the City of Oldsmar somehow ignite that purpose once again in this city. And congratulations. How much money did you raise?
Well, all of us so far for the event has raised, I think, 45,000.
That's amazing from what the activities that we had.
Sure.
Number two, my card.
Oh.
My card?
I was like, how did he get that credit, Lauren?
Would you like to see my card?
Like to see your card? Yeah, sure.
Now, on the back of it will be actually postcard looking thing with each one of y'all's name up there personally. You can get a bunch of them and give some to the like, to the historical society to sell, and the rest of them, you can send to all your friends, your friends, all over the world. No, Eric's friends, no, Gabby's friends, all over the world.
Right.
I'm the only one that doesn't have friends all over the world. I mean, you, you people got them all everywhere, except after Goose, I guess, wherever that place is.
What did he just say?
That's what I said, Drew.
Well, I don't even know what you said.
Neither do I.
Welcome to our world.
I have never been in y'all's world. Now, this one, uh, Tom and Bruce, I'm gonna put it in your hands, and then the city council can act on it. I would like to have a, a discussion, but I also like to have a report from the city manager and, and the legal ramifications from, uh, Tom. And y'all gonna roll, roll your eyeballs again. I'd like to know the benefits and how it will enhance the city that we rezone Meadow, Meadow, Meadowville?
Meadowview.
Meadowview, from what it is to industrial on Douglas Road. To me, that's very important. I mean, we, we've talked about it, we put it off, we, we, we put it over there in the closet somewhere. That piece of land is totally surrounded by heavy industrial. I would suggest that we rezone it as we, you know, you're talking about this out here for the future. That's fine. That's in the future also, where that could be rezoned and bring in a good tax base. So, how do I get a report on that?
I think you just requested it.
I just requested it, okay.
We'll do some work on that.
Thank you. Now, you're gonna roll your eyeballs again. I'd like to have the same report, how we can legally, emotionally, and actually, step by step, as you talked about here, to annex Lockheed Martin. If we don't do that, someday we're gonna sit back and some council is gonna say, why didn't that council in 2000, your 2000, with that mayor, Jerry Beavillan, they didn't do this? And then they're gonna go up to 2016 and say, well, that mayor, Doug Beavis, he didn't do this, and the county's gonna sit there and develop that 80, whatever acres in industrial, and we're gonna lose it. That's the only thing we have left. And I think we should go at, it's the only piece of land we have left that we can actually annex, which is industrial, which brings another incredible tax base to this city. And, and I say, I think, I say, if we don't actively go after that, I think that is a, did I say sin? I don't guess I can say sin.
You just did.
I just did. Okay. That's a political sin.
And to that point, I think, you know, I'm sure you know that the, the process for Lockheed Martin over the past years has changed. A lot of the decisions used to be made here locally, and that's not the case anymore. And in fact, some of the local players have even changed at the local level. And Bruce and I have had discussions about it, and about the best way to do it and how to approach it. And, um, we, we tried to actually set up a meeting with them, um, prior to the ribbon cutting or light switch flipping of the solar panel field that they put in there. And we got some mumbo jumbo horse.
Well, who did you try to set it up?
What's it called? Did they use those cherry droppings? Horse droppings, or whatever it was? Yeah, but we got a, we got a politically, road apples? Yeah, road apples.
Well, we tried, we tried.
We have tried, and I think.
We had conversations long ago.
Yeah, we have reached out, yeah. And we tried to have a lunch, and Bruce can probably go in more detail, but there were some political mumbo jumbo as to why they couldn't. But they're in Washington DC telling me they don't talk to other people.
Well, the mumbo, well, okay, that's probably two, but I would suggest that the city manager and the mayor of this city arbitrarily, which you probably can do, I would hope, create a meeting with them and fly up there and talk to them face to face. You aren't gonna accomplish a thing by going to Lockheed Martin out here. Fly up there and talk to the people. Tom can come back with some, with some goodies that we can probably, I know we can give them some goodies to get them to annex to the city.
Well, and I think the numbers, I think the numbers now, Al's run some preliminary numbers, I think the, the, the positive or negative effect on them is minimal as compared to what it was years ago. Am I correct or incorrect on that?
Seems like it was.
A thousand dollars?
A thousand dollars a month. I wanna say $12,000 a year, or even if it was 20. I mean, for a size operation like that, it's not like, it's gonna.
But the thing of it is, they partner with us all. They never partner with.
And, and to be honest with you, I think.
Partner with us.
To be honest with you, I think the people in DC have no idea that they're in or not, in, in the city or not in the city. And the problem is finding the person that now who makes that decision.
You know, that's a really good point. It wouldn't surprise me if they don't realize whether they're in the city or not.
They don't, I don't think they do.
Leadership up there.
They don't.
And we, you know, we worked on this during, I'm pretty sure when Jim was mayor, if I recall.
Yep.
And, uh, because there was more active local, uh, leadership at the time, but it also ended in DC. But I would say this, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with us getting some, uh, legal, um, I would say direction, not direction, but.
Input.
Assessment.
Yeah.
Of what that process would look like. And, cause I know there has been changes made.
True.
You know, our, our good friend from, uh, Tarpon pushed a lot of those changes.
Yep.
From that. Uh, Mr. Neer.
That's what I'm requesting.
No, it's Mr. Farr. I don't know.
I think so.
But in any event, I think that's, I think it's good, if nothing else, getting an assessment of what would that, what would that entail?
Haven't we brought that up at the priority at the planning meetings sessions before also?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
It has. It hasn't ever made it in the top tier.
Yeah, and I think that's something that, I'm, I'm not opposed to doing it. I think we can. I mean, I think we have some pretty good political relationships with some people that might be able to, you know, we've used them before for guidance as to, you know, what's, what do they suggest is the best path of attack on, on that? And maybe they know somebody that might be able to put us in touch. I don't know.
And you and the city manager are the, you are our mouthpiece.
Sure. And I don't mind that.
Table, across the table can be picked.
We just gotta find out who it is.
All right.
He's good at researching.
I request that we find out who it is by the next council meeting. That's my request, gang.
Well, I, I like, I mean, I've always liked the idea. The problem is, we keep running into kind of roadblocks, and just when we think we've made headway, somebody gets.
But I, you know, I don't disagree. Maybe that's not, you know, we've been there, done that a couple of times, and so perhaps maybe it's a different approach.
Yeah.
I made some, I made some contacts through the Centennial Committee with Lockheed Martin with a sponsorship. I will go to those people and see what I can find out. I don't know if I can find anything out, but I'll try.
Yeah.
However, I mean, they, they partner with us all the time.
Just one of them left.
And they never partner with, they probably even think they're in the city sometime. I, I mean, the way, the way we interact with each other. Anyway, that's my request.
I think maybe Bruce, if Bruce reaches out to the one context that's left there, maybe
I think maybe if Bruce reaches out to the one contact that's left there, maybe find out, you know, so they, so we're not doing an end around on them and say, this is what we'd like to request. We'd like to request, you know, you certainly don't want to circumvent the people that you're trying to annex in. And I think that was, I think that was part of the reason of the bad blood with the Eastlake Woodlands, because we were basically forcing them to annex. They would have been forced to annex in with the Eastlake.
That was a bad move.
And so they felt like they were being told what to do.
Well, that was a bad move.
I didn't say, I didn't say who, what, where, when, but anyway.
We didn't even bring that up.
But the good part is the people in DC have no idea that that ever even happened and so the players have changed.
But I love you anyway.
Go to, in the past, we talked about, or maybe it was a conversation I had with Bob McKenn and Nielsen about when we're trying to annex larger businesses or get bigger corporations to come to the city, was include some of our VPs or executives of the large corporations already here. So say like if you were to go to DC with Bruce, that potentially Bob and someone else from, you know, Micro Lumen or another large company here would go with you and they would say why they support being in the city and why they would, you know, encourage other corporations.
Yeah. Bruce and I have had that discussion about, you know, maybe talking to Amy or if there's, if there's a local group that we can meet with, tell them, you know, how the relationship and the partnership that they have. And again, they may not even know that they're not part of the city. So, you know, I think if we can, maybe we stir that pot again.
I will, at the next council meeting, I will ask what progress you've all made on both of these. Last, I would like it on the agenda, next, our next council meeting, I would like it on the agenda to set a date for the code enforcer work session.
We're fine.
I, I agree with that.
We're fine.
I'm just gonna take that off my list.
I'm fine.
Yep.
Now, y'all did a fine job. I mean, I sat up here and you probably think, oh, who's that moron up there? Well, I'm not really a moron. I mean, y'all did a lot of work and I appreciate that. A lot of the things, I do have to say this, gang, a lot of the things, we have, we already knew what was important. I think the one thing that you, that you did do where we have never really concentrated on, and that would be Park Boulevard down, down around the bay. But we already knew that State Street and St. Pete Drive was our, was our goal. And, and some of the things you did, especially with the, and I agree with those blocks on, where am I here? I'm here, across the street over here. We've never done that before. You know, we have failed at this three times, okay?
Probably more than that.
So, so maybe we can start all over again and do it again and maybe.
But, and to that point, and while St. Pete and State Street and all that is good and we're tying it all together, the good part is they did the research as to what works instead of just going and throwing something up there. I mean, there's a method to the madness that they, that they put together, which I think we've been missing that component. Why are we doing what we're doing?
They did, I mean, they, probably none of this would be built the way it is, but they showed us.
That's the concept, yeah.
The concept of it. And I do appreciate that. Thank you all for who you are.
I'll make it quick. I just wanted to thank you guys for the Cisco quarter end. Wishing me best of luck for that. We did have a great quarter. So I'm sorry I had to miss the concert Friday night, but we did have a great quarter. And then just lastly, just because we talked about Nielsen a little bit, I went to the Tampa Bay Heart Ball Saturday. Cisco sponsored a table there. Nielsen had sponsored a table there. And I ran into Amy there, so it was kind of neat. But that night, within three hours for the American Heart Association, they raised 1.4 million dollars.
Wow, for love.
There were some very deep pockets in the room from a lot of the executives in Tampa Bay. And it was supporting a great cause. So it was a really great event. And I want to wish Rita happy birthday this week.
Oh, man, you were reaching. Anybody else in this city you'd like to?
That's all I got.
Councilmember Sarek?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Couple things I have. Thank you to the Centennial Volunteers for all their hard work and all the sponsors. Jerry, I know you worked the tech. Thank you. I saw you there. I waved.
You get him in the pyramid?
Yes. No, we didn't get him in the pyramid.
That wasn't.
It was a great event. It was, weather was perfect. And then.
Only thing that bothered me was that spy, that spy in the sky.
Oh, yeah. I haven't seen that video yet. There was a droid.
Drone.
Drone, yeah.
That old phone.
Yeah, he was there a lot, taking a lot of videos. And then Bruce, I saw in the under the hood, you've been here 30 years this month. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You did a great job with the city.
He is the senior city manager of almost Florida.
Yeah.
And I thank you for all you've done for me in the last year and four months and training me how to, about our city. I appreciate it.
And we'll get you up to speed.
Yes. Now, I want to talk about, of course, Ann, congratulations with your, your cancer walk, but I want to talk about Silent But Deadly, A Tale Of Two Toilets.
Oh, my God.
Did anybody read Ann's story?
I read it. Yes. Let them read it on their own. You're not gonna read it.
Oh, I just want to say that's a story. And I'm glad that when you did the die, you were drinking wine. I enjoyed that, reading that. Wanted to tell you. If you let me read that, that's, that's pretty good. And the last thing, I'm gonna be joining you Thursday at the Sheriff's Academy. I missed that class, so I'm going there. And then I'd like.
We're not riding together, by the way. I got something else.
Oh, come on, really?
I got a PSTA thing. If I don't, I'm gonna get one scheduled.
The only other thing I'd like to add to the agenda next week, if possible, Tom is gonna get me the contract for the Centennial Concert. And I would like to add that to the agenda if I can get that signed hopefully by Friday. I'd like to get it from Tom and then try to get it signed. Bruce?
It's signed on time. It'll be on there for the next meeting.
By Friday.
Both of them or just the one?
Just the one. We, I don't have, well, the Tampa Bay Times one, I'd like to, I really want to get the Centennial promoter on the agenda.
Yeah, that one's done.
Tampa Bay Times one, I'm not, the Tampa Bay Downs, excuse me, I'm not worried about that one. I'm worried about the Centennial one. So by Friday, Bruce, I have to?
It's done, Bruce. We just need to get it to the promoter to sign.
No, you got at least a week.
Okay, good. At least a week. Thank you. And then last but least, thank you again. Congratulations on a great job. Well done. You should be all proud of yourself. You have all bright futures ahead of you. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few items, surprisingly enough. First off, I'd like to congratulate Ann on the work she did on the walk. I'd like to congratulate Dan and his team on the fifth Friday.
Thank you.
It was terrific. I want to call Gabby out, make sure she's going to the fire ops week from Saturday.
I am going. No more heckling.
I'm going to, and so is Ann. So we'll have a nice representation there from the city of Oldsmar.
I may go, you know, I've been through it one time.
It's next week?
A week from Saturday.
I am gonna try, you know, at, at my ancient age, what I'm going through, I may try it one more time, but not go through all the process that.
You should.
I can watch y'all go through there.
Down there.
Heard a heckle.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. You bet y'all.
Maybe they can learn how to rescue a senior citizen or something.
That would be terrific. I said I'd mention it when I was at the fire department the other day. The group from USF students did a great job. I think that the greatest value in what you brought and in terms of return of investment for the money we spent on the project, you know, one of the challenges I think we've always had where the projects have failed before has been so, so focused on, on developing this set number of acres here on State Street and not having a bigger picture. I also think that one of the failures in the past has been that we've relied very heavily on the developer. And so it ultimately never, it became one of these budding heads in terms of trying to really create vision for way past all of us. And the developers have, you know, well, this is what works and sells, or this or that. And while I think that's great, we're more interested in building something that lasts.
And works.
And, and that fits.
Our community.
I don't know that, that's, yeah, I really think that that's the difference. And then when working with them, yeah, it's an investment. But the unbiased part, you know, of this is the research, this is some of the, you know, and, and I think that will hold a lot of value for us moving forward. I really do. I think that we'll do things in phases, obviously. And, but I think you did a very good job and so you're to be commended on it. And the last thing I have, I haven't even looked at my phone, but I'm gonna say go Bolts.
Oh, I'm hoping, God, it's a.
Oh, well, that's because we had a long meeting.
Four, three. Two minutes left.
Horrible.
Four, three, and it's a minute left?
Oh, there's plenty of time.
Oh, there's plenty of time.
A minute left?
Two minutes.
Oh, two minutes? All right, that's all I got, Mr.?
What a, what a bunch of naysayers. There's two minutes left. That's three more gold.
Go Bolts and that's all I got, Mr. Mayor?
Man, what a bummer you are.
Jerry, Beaverton number two over there.
I only have a couple of things to USF. I wish you guys the best. I really echo what a lot of was said, and I've already said too, I think what the vice mayor said really hit it on the head that, you know, we've missed kind of the vision, overall vision and how we tie it together. And I think, you know, I think you've sold us on a lot of the research and why, you know, again, as I said down there, there's a method to the madness of, you know, why you do things and how you assemble the different stuff. The stuff you did across the street, I think, is great. How it works in pods, you know, one, four legs work better than one. And we had trouble seeing that, you know. So I really thank you guys for the work and, and a fairly short period of time. So I thank you for that. And again, wish you the best of luck moving forward and hopefully you'll remember this experience as a good one and a great relationship with the city. And, you know, whether we develop 50% of it or, you know, whatever component of it, just feel that you are a part of the next 100 years of the city of Oldsmar. So I think that's something that you should take away and, you know, put that on your resume, because some of this stuff is gonna get implemented and I think that's really important. So you should be proud of yourself. I took architecture in school and, and so I have an appreciation for the effort that goes into it. And, you know, some of us may get it and some of us may not, but I really like the overall concept and how it ties together. So I thank you for that.
Every ancient.
He's never done, even when he says he's done, he's never done. Learn that.
We, we know, we know of every ancient history going back to four, 5,000 years, three things that we know, their literature, their artwork, and their architecture.
Yeah.
And that's how we know ancient history.
Yeah, I agree.
You add value in that comment.
Wow, that was, wow, kind of.
Those deep.
That was pretty deep for you.
That was good.
Man, off the cuff, too. Way to go, Jerry. Then the only other thing I have is I went to the city of Safety Harbor and God bless our city. I went to their city council meeting and I know they're watching these because they get our video, but woo, am I glad I'm the mayor of the city of Oldsmar, because that was a, that was a tough crowd over there. And I got to tell you, and I've said this before, you know, while we may not agree